Okay. Are you good, Kim?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Oh, yeah, and you, Kimmy? Thank you. Okay, here we go. Welcome to Beverly School Committee Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities. Today is Wednesday, April 27th, and we are meeting in a very challenged technology high-bread model today with remote meeting application provided to our district at no cost with captioning. We are recording this evening and may or may not be broadcasting on BEV CAM due to technical difficulties. On June 16th, 2021, the governor signed Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. And on February 12th, 2022, he extended the provisions to, among other things, allow public bodies to continue to hold meetings remotely until January 15th, 2022. This specifically suspends the need for a quorum and the chair to be physically present and asks our body to use technical methods to allow safe public access to our meetings. We would encourage viewers to utilize a BEV CAM streaming options this evening if possible. As a note, Beverly has prior approval for remote participation through the chair and a quorum, although the chair and a quorum are actually present this evening. Tonight is an FNF meeting. This means we will not have an agenda item for addressing the body during our meeting. Joining us this evening are representatives, citizen representatives to the FNF, school committee members, and various members of the district administration. I will be doing a roll call shortly. Okay, so here, let's just do it right now. In the room, Citizen Representative Lindsey Ducharme, who doesn't have a microphone right in front of her, but yeah, try that.
Present, here.
Thank you. School committee member, Ms. Quelo.
Here.
Online, school committee member, Dr. McKenzie. Did we hear that very well? You did? Okay, okay. In the room, Citizen Representative Mr. Manzo.
Here.
Thank you. Also in the room, Dr. Turocek.
Here.
Director of Finance, Jean Sherburne.
Here.
City Council Member Todd Rotundo.
Here.
Trying to help us with our technology, Rachel A. Bell.
Present.
Also in the back of the room, the longest title ever, Ms. Brown. And Dr. Morgan. Thank you. Also online, Director of Food Services, Christina Liel. Okay, and do I have anybody else online, Rachel? Oh, Director of Transportation Dana Cruyshank? I don't see anybody else. Hold on a minute. Oh, and our recording secretary, oh, thank goodness, Ms. Liz Curran. Yeah, I can barely hear her. All right. All right, because we have some members who are remote, some voting members who are remote, all our votes will have to be by roll call. Okay, we got started a little late, so we're going to try to bust through. The first order of business is approval of our meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve our meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Quelo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manzo. Are there any corrections? Sorry, I'll put that up on the screen for those of you sharing at home or looking at home. Do I have any omissions, corrections, anything that needs to change in these meeting minutes? Yes, Mr. Manzo?
Just, I was here, but Dr. McKenzie was not. She was remote last, so just need to flip our, flip the two of us in the meeting minutes.
Okay, so Ms. Liz Curran, Mr. Manzo says he's listed as being here.
No, listed as remote, but I was here.
Right, so I'm highlighting on my screen, Mr. Manzo is listed as being remote. In fact, he was in person, and Dr. McKenzie is listed as being present. In fact, she was remote, as she is this evening. Can you please make those corrections? Kim, she said, yeah, right? Okay, so with that amendment, we're ready to vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. McKenzie, are you trying, are you speaking?
I was actually not sure that I was remote at the time, but I could have been. I would have to check that, and I'm assuming it's correct.
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie, yes, you were remote because our last meeting was before.
Yeah, I think I was remote. I'm just verifying that in my notes here.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to vote. Dr. McKenzie? Yes. Fantastic, thank you. In the room, Mr. Manzo.
Yes.
Ms. Ducharme.
Yes.
Ms. Quelo.
Yes.
Myself, yes. One, two, three, four, five. That passes five to zero. Holy moly. Okay, our next order of business is the building and grounds report. That was sent to you in your packets. Does anybody have any comments or questions on the building and grounds report? And Dr. Ms. McKenzie, I'll try to look, and if you want to, like, if you want to say something, if you put your icon hand up, your little emoji, okay? Okay, so the next order of business is our Director of Finances. Update, I'm bringing that update on my screen. How's it, how's it look? Everybody dialed in? Can you see the update on my screen? Can I have a thumbs up by anybody online? Thank you, Ms. Liel. Okay, Ms. Sherburne, I'm going to go on mute, and you can tell me when to scroll.
So now I'm, okay. Okay, so just the Finance and Facilities meeting is today, April 27th, and we had Earth Day this week, so I wanted to point that out. The administration updates is we're going to be talking about how Beverly was making the news this past Sunday. Ms. Liel will be talking about the Centerville Cafeteria update, and then I will be having our normal financial updates. So here, Beverly making the WCVB channel news on Sunday, April 24th. They recognized two Massachusetts cities, Beverly and Framingham, that are working to lower their carbon footprints. The city of Beverly was recognized for their electric school buses and the new geothermal police station and the many solar arrays throughout the city. And I've attached the video that was there, and here you see a picture of Mr. Cruyshank because he was the one driving the bus on this. So we can have people view this later if they want, but it was on Sunday night from 7:00 to 8:00, and it was at 7:45, just when I logged on, so I got to see it live. The next thing I have here is the cafeteria update, and if you can click on the Centerville Cafeteria update, Ms. Liel will talk that.
So I'm excited to be able to talk to you tonight about the Centerville Beaver Lodge Cafe. It was a project that I was super excited about and wanted to share with everyone, and it's really for the kids, so if you go to the left screen, I can tell you a little bit about why I wanted to do this project.
How do I get to the next? Hold on one second.
So, the reasons that I wanted to do this makeover is over the past couple of years, obviously, COVID, the kids have been eating outside, they haven't been able to enjoy the cafeteria, and we know how important it is. That's it down.
You should send this to us.
Sit down, enjoy our food.
I thought it was, but.
And listen and study eating on the run, and because you're outside, you can do it either way, and not sit so much, sit down and eat. I did apply for a grant from Project Pride, and we were awarded a $3,000 grant. And so when I met with this company, it started very small because I only had $3,000, and then I saw what they could do. And I brought it to Dr. Turocek and Mrs. Sherburne, and they loved the idea as well. So I was so excited, they let us do this complete makeover. Because over the past years, we bought all this new equipment that we needed, which was great. I bought two side refrigerated truck over at U-Home Vacation as well, but the kids didn't really get to see the benefit of it, so I really wanted to do something for the customers, which is our good kids. And so I think, and I hope you will be as happy as I am with the outcome of this. So I do have some videos on the upcoming slides of the before of what Centerville Cafeteria looked like, so for those that didn't see it before. Looks pretty much like our most of our cafeterias. And then here is the after. And I have to say, it doesn't even do it justice.
Yeah, oh, I see, sorry. I'm not very good on driving this here.
Good job, Jean. Oh, nice.
It came out really nice. Something kind of safe, be kind. And all the way up to, painted up here, too.
Oh, good. Put a kowal on the tree?
Yeah. No. They painted the tile on the bottom, too. Yes, there was an eagle. Test.
She got it, didn't she?
She probably didn't notice. Got an eagle in the Beaver Lodge. Eagle blue ears. Test. So there's a lot of detail.
So I think we're just playing this on a loop?
I think it's just because I'm playing. And they actually did it in the kitchen, too. So. So some of these things are attached to the wall, and some of it's painted right on the wall? Did it go over again?
If you hit the little.
And here is, I hope you guys can hear the sound on this. This was, I believe it's a kindergarten class, their reaction coming in, and it was so cute.
So they can't. Oh, here.
So I've already started the process, I've talked to the principals about getting other schools done, so we would like to redo all the cafeterias. It's just, I see such a value in it. We would like to do something in the middle school and high school, obviously, not too bad, but still with the graphics, which I'm towards designing, our station's designing. I'm currently working with Desi and Sid on City Hall to submit the I of B to begin the process for doing more schools next fiscal year, and hopefully by September of 2023, I will be able to have them all.
That's great.
So how do I unstop sharing?
Jean, are we going to switch?
Now, can I, can they hear if I speak? Oh. So, so one thing that I wanted Christina, to add to Christina's thing here is that whenever we do something that we're spending the food service revolving funds for, she does have to get DESE permission. She has to ask them first for anything there over a certain dollar amount. So we've done that, they were really excited about this. And the company was here over April vacation to do all of this. And I went over the day they came back, and there were so many kids that came up to me, and one was really cute. He came up and he says to me, "Did the Beavers do this?" So it was really cute that they did that. And, and actually, hearing the teachers and the paraprofessionals that came up, they were like, we had no idea. So we really did surprise pretty much everybody. Of course, the principal was aware of it because she was helping with the planning of it, so. Christina, did you have anything else that you wanted to add, or? Okay. Thank you. So the next thing we'll have is talking about our financials, revenues, expenses, transfers, acceptance of gifts, and acceptance of the Mass Cultural Council grants.
What would you like to go to first that we could vote?
Sure, we could do the revenues. So the revenue report is, everything is coming in pretty much as we have been anticipating. There's some areas that we're not sure if we're going to be able to collect the full amount, like the building rental. I do believe that we will hit that target, but there's a possibility that that may not come in. We are collecting on preschool as we normally do. In athletics, I'm not sure if they're going to be able to collect all of the fees that we had anticipated, but there'll be enough funds in the revolving accounts to cover any shortages that we have. Athletics, we may need to put some funding in there for their revolving carryover. And as usual, anyone that has a financial issue right now, that they can always fill out a new application, scholarship application if their financial situation changes.
All right, before we move, before we move off of revenues, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Sherburne on the revenues? We are under a little bit of a time crunch here, but I'm looking around the room, I'm looking online. I don't see Dr. McKenzie's little icon hand up. Okay, Ms. Sherburne, what would you like next?
Let's do the voting things, and then we'll go to the expenditure report. So the first thing I have is the journal entry number 764.
All right.
So as you're aware, that any time that we have something that crosses a cost center, even if it's a like situation, I bring that forward. So I've been looking at the utilities. Primarily, I looked at the electric this particular month, and there are some schools that we needed to put additional funding in, approximately $15,000 into Ayers, Cove, McEwen, and North Beverly. And I had a surplus in the high school facilities electric bill to cover those costs, so this transfer is for that. I did have a meeting this week with Mr. Rotundo, and we were talking about different utilities in the schools, and we are looking, need to look a little bit deeper as far as what we're getting for solar credits to make sure that we're getting that's, I'm working with Bryant on that, to make sure that we have it spread across the accounts so that some accounts aren't getting an additional cost because we're buying credits that are offsetting the National Grid. So I need to look a little bit deeper in that. Also, during this review, I did find that some schools, they've been having difficulty doing meter reads from National Grid. So I've reached out to Mike Collins's department to help me with that on who the contact would be at National Grid to make sure. So we're doing a deeper dive in it to find out why certain schools have additional costs, and I think it's because some of the schools are not getting charged for it in the particular month. And I don't want to get a surprise at the end of the year with a bill that's much higher. So, so this transfer here would be for what I forecast for the remainder of the year.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept this transfer?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Manzo.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Quelo. Are there any questions for Ms. Sherburne on the transfer in addition to what she's already explained? Okay, there's a motion and a second, we're going to go around and vote. Dr. McKenzie? Yes, thank you. Doctor, Mr. Manzo?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Ducharme.
Yes.
Ms. Quelo?
Yes.
Me, yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. I missed some thank yous in there. That passes five to zero.
The next thing I'd like to bring forward is the FY '22 Mass Cultural Council grants.
You should see that. I have to double unmute, sorry, when it's my turn to talk. You should see that on your screen now, everybody.
Okay, and what we're moving forward here is these are grants that we received from the Mass Cultural Council, and these are the Stars residency grants. Cove, Beverly High, Beverly Middle School, Centerville, and North Beverly all receive those, these grants. The total comes to $25,250. Most of these grants, the Mass Cultural Council will be paying the vendor that we are working with for the residency programs directly, but we need to make sure we show it in as it coming in and going out. Change is Simple is one of the vendors, and yourself. What's, express yourself. Knew there was a yourself in there. Express Yourself is two of the vendors that we've been using.
Okay, so before we can start any discussion, I'm looking for a motion to accept this grant.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Ducharme.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Quelo. I have a question, my own self, but I'm looking, Dr. McKenzie, you unmuted? Do you have a question? No, I'm looking around the room, any questions? Okay, I'll call on my own self. My question is about the consistency. We show three elementary schools, but not all five, so that always concerns me whether we're trying to be equitable across all our elementary schools. Is this a matter of those other two elementary schools decided not to apply for a Mass Cultural Council grant, or did they apply and they didn't win?
I do not know. I do not know.
Okay. Okay, I just, you know, sometimes when somebody applies for a grant, like through BEV Ed, they say, okay, we're going to do it for all these different schools, even though one school applied, so it would be best.
So I can tell you that in the past, some of the other schools have gotten those grants, so it could be that for this year, they chose not to. They applied somewhere else for something different. They may have utilized a different grant in a different way, so.
Are you coming in to try to fix? Come on in, come on in and try to fix our technology for us.
Sorry, so I just, you know, I don't have, I don't know the answer to whether or not they put in an application and it was, it was not accepted, or typically, I would have expected that if, that they would have been awarded a grant, unless, so it must, maybe that they chose to go in a different direction with a different kind of grant. I'm not really sure, but I can find out.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table, and it's been seconded, we'll vote. Dr. McKenzie, thank you for unmuting, as you were ready to vote earlier. I'll call on you first. Thank you. Mr. Manzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ducharme?
Yes.
Ms. Quelo?
Yes.
Myself, yes, because who would say no to free money? That passes five to zero. Thank you, everybody.
Gifts to Schools is the next thing. So we have here for the month of, what we received for the month of March is $1,250. $1,000 came from the Institute for Savings for senior celebrations at the high school, and $250 came from the Masonic Angel Fund for fire victims of the Blaine Ave. fam in Beverly.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to accept this Gifts of Schools totaling $1,250.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ducharme and Ms. Quelo. Do I have any questions, comments, concerns? Then we'll vote in the same order, Dr. McKenzie? Yes, thank you. Mr. Manzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ducharme?
Yes.
Ms. Quelo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you, everybody. That passes five to zero. What's next, Ms. Sherburne?
The next thing that we have is the final item, is the budget report, the year-to-date budget report, the expenditure report. And if anybody has any particular questions, there are areas in here that we always are looking at, and one of them, of course, is.
You give a page number when you name one of those?
Substitute line, which is OT 275, which is around page 32.
Sorry for you people at home who have to watch me scroll really fast. Page 32, OT 35.
Yep, so we're looking at that, we have some, you know, some funding in here of 213,000 remaining, which is a little high for us at this time, but we'll be looking at other areas where there may be short in other salary accounts to oversee that. But that's one area that we have, and as you know, we've had difficulty getting some substitutes, and then we did raise the substitute rate. So that is one area that I do foresee that will have some savings in. What you have to be reminded is that with long-term subs, they get paid at the bachelor's step one rate, which is $238 a day. So people that are on a maternity leave will eat that up quite quickly. So I don't have any fear that we don't have enough funds, but we may have a little surplus that can be used elsewhere in the budget. The other area that I'm usually bringing forth to the committee to be looking at is the SP 860, which is page 38. And that shows quite a balance at the moment right now, so we have to look at the circuit breaker to make sure that we've not charged too much to the circuit breaker. What we did last year is we were able to pay some prepay, some tuitions, and by law, we can pay up to three months of tuitions out of the current year budget for the next year. And I do believe it was about $800,000, I'm not sure if Bethany's, nope, $800,000. So we're planning, I've already had a meeting with the special ed director and the superintendent to talk about what is our plan for this year, so we can do that. That's something that, it's not a normal thing that we've been able to do in Beverly, but a lot of communities have been able to do that. If we had some high costs that come in, obviously, we wouldn't be able to do it, but we do feel that we're going to be able to do that again. And the reason why that is coming in is that we've had less students that are going out in, out of district, but we're trying to build our programs in. So the first thing I need to look at is where we've hired some teachers this year to keep, you know, bring students in. What is my offset? I just need to double-check those. I think I'm right about in line with what we thought we would be carrying, what we'd have to do. So that's one thing that I need to meet with Bethany, and I think our meeting is actually next week. And we meet each month, and each month is always something. It's, it's like a laundry list of this child is, you know, moving from this placement to this placement, and she has a few that we did budget in here that we were anticipating that they may go out to a residential, and they didn't. So this is one of those areas that we'll make sure that, you know, we utilize it, and when we build the budget for the next year, we've already taken that into consideration.
Okay, so those are the two areas that Ms. Sherburne would choose to bring forward and call out as attention-getting, in a, in a good direction, though, as opposed to a shortfall, right? So I'm looking around the room to see if anybody has any questions. Mr. Manzo, I saw your hand go up first.
Well, and since we're on this page, so that 860 area has three lines that have to do with summer programs? Is that for this summer or last summer?
It would be for last summer, so, yep.
That's too bad.
And are those each lines that are already 100%?
We could use that, we could use that because we can prepay up to three months, so we could use it for the summer for this year. So we could use it for the summer for this year if we have it. So when we're building the budget for FY23, we've already looked into some of these areas. And you won't see a substantial increase in special education because we have been looking at this, knowing that we'll be able to prepay a little bit.
Okay, Ms. Ducharme.
So my question, I know we had a lot of staff outages because of illnesses and stuff lately. And I know you touched on the lack of availability for a sufficient number of substitutes. What do we do about cases where we have special education needs and IEPs? And how do we make sure that those IEP services are getting met? In addition to what teachers are already overwhelmed with if we have substitute shortages? Like if we just can't fill the spots, which I understand is sometimes going to happen? How do we make sure that we're meeting all those needs?
Well, I, I think that, that's the role that Bethany, along with the building principals, make to make sure that when they re, when they move people around or when they're doing, when they're resourcing, that they're, they're in compliance with all of the IEPs and that services are being met. So we, you know, we are doing that. We make sure that we do that. And so I, I don't, I'm not sure I understand beyond that your question.
So are, are, when you're looking, when you have staff outages and you have like a special education teacher that's out that's providing services for an, for a student on an IEP, do those teacher substitutes get prioritized? I guess is one part of my question.
So I would say that, I would rephrase it that, that they're, that the special education services are logged so that we make sure so if a special ed teacher is out and they're not, there's not a substitute available, they make that service up at another time during the week. They might find another way to do that. But there, there's the, actually, Liz, who is on the line, who is doing our recording, does a tremendous job at the middle school. It is, it is a task and a half to make sure that we provide the coverage in each one of the rooms and looking at all of those things. But that's one of the considerations that we have, whether or not, if, if there's a paraprofessional that might be pulled to cover for a teacher, we need to make sure that it's not one that would be impacting a compliance issue. So really, what you're talking about is compliance with those IEPs. And, and, you know, that's one of the things that we've been keeping our eye very closely on throughout the year.
All right, do we have any other questions? Oh, yes, Mr. Manzo.
Yeah, I've got a more, maybe more general question, and I apologize if this has been covered already. In the budget, there are a couple of places where some large transfers have been made over the course of the fiscal year, particularly in buildings and grounds and fire insecurity. It's page seven. And then there's a line for computers, I think probably educational computers on page 34, which had a boost of $663,000. And so my question is, when we have these large expenses like this, they've been added to an already big budget line, are these things we need to take into account when we're planning next year's budget? If they're going to be recurring? Or are these like one-offs that we had the money available and let's buy some computers and let's pay for some, some upgrades to some of the buildings?
Yes, so some of the things that did happen is, so one thing to remember is the transfers will also include anything that was carried over as purchase orders from the end of the year. So we did have some funding available at the end of last year. We did put in some purchase orders in June that would have rolled over to cover those. Technology is one of those areas that we like to do. We have to just be careful that we don't purchase too, too many and that we have that cliff that Dr. Shirocheck always talks about with ESSER funding. So we are, we do that. We're looking at different areas. So when she's actually bringing her budget forward in the next meeting, she is talking about making sure that we do have sustainability for the teacher laptops in there. So that is areas that we do. And a lot of it is the excess of carryovers. It has been the carryovers is the big transfers that are in there. There's nothing that I recall of that we really had to transfer funds in that we had short for this year, but it was more carryover.
A, a good example is the fire panels that we replaced at a couple of the schools. So it was, when, when there was some funding available, you know, we knew that we could do that. We made sure that we targeted, I think it was two of the different elementary schools, that those panels, which are, you know, like every 10 years or so, get done. And so those were, we moved the money into that line so that, knowing that we could do that, because we were able to do it. So yes, that they're sort of one-time expenditures sometimes that we, and the PO may have carried over into the year because it was, you know, between supply chains, which are running slow. We're really struggling kind of making sure that things get done as quickly as we can, so.
Thank you.
All right, I'm looking around the room. I'm looking online for any additional hands, for any additional questions for Ms. Sherburne. All right, I don't know off the top of my rapidly graying head when our next meeting is, but I would like to call for a motion.
I think it's May 25th.
25th, I think.
May 25th?
I think May 25th. And I think I was going to be asking Mr. Keith to give us an athletic update.
That would be fantastic.
And there's some other things that the city was looking for us to approve that, that may come forward to in that meeting.
We'll have to have a little powwow about that. I'm actually out of state that day, so I can either run a meeting remote or we'll find a lovely volunteer to run the meeting in my place. Okay, so with that, a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Manzo.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Quelo. Roll call, vote. Ms., Dr. McKenzie. Thank you. Mr. Manzo.
Yes.
Ms. Ducharme.
Yes.
Ms. Quelo.
Yes.
Myself, yes. That passes five to zero. Thank you, everybody. And we're going to sign off of this one and hopefully get our next one set up to go on all gears.
Go ahead.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you also for your patience as we tried to troubleshoot and get a workaround for our hybrid meeting this evening. Welcome to the Beverly School Committee meeting. It is the committee of the whole. Today is Wednesday, the 27th of April, 2022. It's 7:39 PM. This is a hybrid meeting this evening, so we have participants both remotely and in person. So we will be conducting roll call votes. We are using an application platform that's provided at no cost to our district with some captioning. This allows for remote participation and for public access to the open portions of this meeting. I am also recording this meeting as a backup this evening that will help assist us if there's any more technology issues. We'll have a backup recording as well. We want to thank BevCam for broadcasting this meeting tonight. Thank you, BevCam. And all of this is possible because the governor signed the Chapter 20 Acts of 2021 back on June 16th and again on February 12th, 2022. He extended provisions that, among other things, allow public bodies to continue to hold meetings remotely until July 15, 2022. This act specifically suspends the need for a quorum and the chair to be physically present for a meeting and asks our body to use technical methods to allow for safe public access. Tonight, we do have a quorum present with just one member being on the remote platform. We encourage all viewers to use the BevCam streaming options this evening if possible, since they provide an easy way to access this meeting. But I also wanted to just make a note that Beverly itself has prior approval for remote participation. So after July 15, 2022, we can continue to have remote participants as we deem necessary. The only stipulation in those cases is that the chair and a quorum are physically present. Tonight is a committee of the whole, as I mentioned, and therefore, we do not have an agenda to hear any public address. Let's see, our next regularly scheduled meeting will be on May 11th. And residentvoice@beverlyschools.org is the way to get on that public speak. Joining us tonight are members of the committee, as well as various members of our district administration and leadership team, as well as some guest speakers. I'm going to conduct, conduct a full roll call in attendance so that we can capture all of those who are in person, as well as participating on the remote meeting platform, because sometimes the application does not display everyone. So we want to know who is here. I'll start in person. We are joined by Dr. Jeffrey Silva, our Ward Four.
Here.
And Mayor Michael Cahill.
Here.
Our Finance Director, Jean Sherburne.
Here.
And our Superintendent, Dr. Suzanne Shirocheck.
Here.
We're also joined by Dr. Andre Morgan and Ms. Erin Brown, as well as Dr. Flaherty, our Assistant Superintendent, and Bethany Spalansky, our Director of Special Education and People Personnel Services. We have School Committee Representative for Ward Six, Ms. Larinda Visnick.
Here.
For our Ward Three School Committee Representative, we have Kimberly Quelo.
Here.
We have Ms. Karen Robinson for Ward Five.
Here.
And my name is Rachel Abel. I am representing Ward One. We have Dr. Kenan McKenzie joining us remotely for Ward Two. Okay, we have our Recording Secretary, Liz Karan, joining us remotely as well. There we go. We have Dana Khrushenk, our Director of Transportation. It's making a sound of some sort. And Principal Amy Blanchard is joining us. And then our, and Caitlin Ballezza is also joining us from the district. And then for our guests, we have Jennifer Buchart, and Margaret Farick, and Brian Ward, and Mary Walsh. And I think that covers all of our roll call at this point. I will keep a note if others join us remotely or in person. Okay, thank you very much. As I mentioned, we are using a remote meeting platform. We're having a little bit of audio problems this evening, but we're trying to work through that. If you could keep your own device on mute when you are not speaking, that will help us. And then remember to unmute. We also have these microphones in person that we do need to still use for BevCam to be able to hear us. They are broadcasting us. And with that, I think we are ready to start our meeting. I like to call on someone different for the pledge each time. I'm trying to remember, Ms. Quelo, have you been called on recently? Okay, well, why don't you lead us in the pledge? Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have three items to address right off the top. And these are our meeting records from February 16, 22, March 23, 22, and March 31, 22. We can entertain these collectively or individually?
Collectively. I will approve them all.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Cahill is suggesting we collectively approve. Is there a second?
Could we, I think maybe individually, only because I was not here for the open meeting law because I was stuck at my other job.
Okay, sure. We'll, we'll run through them really quickly. So Mayor Cahill, would you move to approve the February 16, 22?
Yes.
And what is the second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Ms. Visnick, okay. We do need to do a roll call vote really quickly. Mayor Cahill.
Yes.
Dr. Silva.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Quelo.
Yes.
Ms. Visnick.
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie. Yes, and Rachel Abel, yes. So it's seven to zero. I'm going to use that same order for efficiency's sake and for our minutes. The next is, I'm looking for a motion for March 23, 22, Joint Counsel.
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Thank you, Ms. Visnick. Same, or any corrections? No. Mayor Cahill.
Yes.
Dr. Silva.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Quelo.
Yes.
Ms. Visnick.
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie. And Ms. Abel, seven to zero. And now March 31st, which was our open meeting, that was a remote meeting.
Rachel, I think Dr. McKenzie abstained.
Abstained, abstained, thank you. I was trying to read lips. It was hard. Thank you. So March 31st, is there a motion to approve the open meeting law?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Thank you, Ms. Visnick.
Yes, second, yes, thank you. I, I was just noticing that on the agenda, it has the wrong date, but then I'm looking at the wrong agenda. Sorry.
Correct. It's March 31st. Okay, same order, Mayor Cahill.
Yes.
Dr. Silva.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Quelo.
Abstained.
Abstained. Ms. Visnick.
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie. Abstained? That was a yes. Okay. And Rachel Abel, yes, so it's six, zero. Okay. Thank you so much. And now I am going to put myself on mute and shift over to Dr. Shirocheck so she can both present and let our other presenters present and speak. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to share my screen. And just briefly run through the first couple of things that we have on our agenda. Quick update on COVID. Tonight, we have a City Connects presentation. We have our folks joining us remotely, so I'll be turning it over to them. And then we'll finish with the budget discussion after that. So just briefly and quickly, in terms of the, the district dashboard, I just presented each time. We do keep it up to date. Jody Elder and the nursing staff continue to do it. Again, we know that these are cases that we have that are reported and that, that there's just a tracking opportunity for consistency's sake. I'm really not sure how valuable this is at this point and maybe coming to a close in terms of it being useful for us. But we've been continuing to do that. We also are required to continue to update the DESI dashboard, which we do. The, again, my work in conjunction with the Board of Health, Teresa Kirsch keeps us up to date. As you can see, we are seeing, you know, slight increases of reported cases. I'll repeat that, of reported cases. But again, not to the, not to the level that we saw in January. While it's an uptick, we're not seeing it to that, quite to that level just yet. But we are always monitoring and will continue to monitor the data that we, and the metrics that we do use, we are continually to utilize. And so that's just a quick update on that. Any questions? Other than that, we're ready to kind of up. Ms. Visnick?
I, I apologize. I am jonesing to hear the City Connects presentation. I'm not in the Zoom meetings. Do you need me to be so you can hear me? I am curious if we ever had any levels of if we hit this, we're going to institute this particular preventative measure. If we hit this number of cases, we'll go back to eating outdoors, even though the Centerville cafeteria looks like
Beautiful.
the best thing ever, right?
So we do not, I, I don't have any particular metrics established to set and say that we would do. I would say that we're going to continue to monitor the metrics that we do, which are, first of all, the cases that are reported and the information that we get from the Board of Health, watching very closely on hospitalizations as, as others are. But also following the lead, we've been, throughout this pandemic, working very closely with DESI because they utilize some of the health professionals at a different level. The Association of Pediatrics, the CDC, and all of those looking for information. So I do not have, we did not establish ever a baseline that said, if this happens, we'll do that. But we will continue, I will continue to bring forward to the committee the information that I have available so that we can keep that in consideration.
One follow-up, please.
Yep, can I just speak, I'll just respond. I believe that eating outdoors is, you know, weather at this point in time more dictated than not. I think most of the schools are anxious and excited about the ability to get back outside for lunches. So I think we will see the kids going out and eating outside more and more as the weather improves. I've seen a few quick snapshots of that happening at some buildings, so we'll continue to monitor that.
All right, I do, I think that you mentioned, you emphasize the reported cases.
Yep.
And so can you speak at all to how many people are enrolled in the at-home testing compared to, compared to what we think we used to do in the other testing program?
Yes, thanks for asking. I actually forgot. So I recently got a new update today. We have over 2,000 individual people enrolled in our at-home testing program. So close to 50% of our families are taking advantage of that at-home testing, you know, the at-home program. We distribute the kits every other week. Those kits are available so that if you are part of the program, you have the kit. And each Wednesday, you're, we're asking that you administer that test. And in addition, the city recently donated a number of kits that we sent home just today to our staff. So they also got an additional kit. The staff also got that. I'm also, I am watching attendance and the attendance data. And so we have not been hit too badly from the return from vacation. You know, we thought, I was a little concerned what it would look like coming back from vacation. But our attendance, our staff attendance has been really pretty strong, much better than it had been at the beginning of the year or at any of the other times when we were having uptick. So that's another piece of. So that's another piece of information that we continue to watch. But we have over 2,000 people on our list for distribution of the kits. So that's great news. And we'll continue that through the end of the school year.
Thank you.
All right. So I guess then that we're going to kind of move on to our opportunity to have our City Connects presentation. You know that I gave my, a small overview for all of you about six weeks ago. We've also had the opportunity, worked very closely with City Connects. We've had a presentation for our administrative leadership team. We've had a presentation for our school adjustment counselors and the support staff team. And now, tonight, I've asked for them to come and present to you just some more information. And I asked for a little bit more focus tonight on the data dashboards and what that looks like because I know that was sort of an interest from the committee. But I'm going to introduce who we have. We have Dr. Mary Walsh here. She's the Executive Director of the Center for Thriving Children. We have Margot Farrick. She's the Director of Student Support Programs and Practice. We have Brian Ward. He's the Technology Manager, Support and Administration. And Jennifer Buchart, who's the Senior Manager of Learning and Development. So I am going to actually stop sharing. I'm going to mute myself and I am going to turn it over to the folks from City Connects to be able to do our presentation for us. And I will turn my, mine off, but I have my sound on, so we should be able to hear them. I probably shut myself off too early. So you guys can take it away.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can somebody say?
Can you have audio?
Yes, we can hear you, ma'am.
I can hear you.
My name is Mary Walsh. I direct the Center for Thriving Children at Boston College. And I'm also a faculty member in the Lynch School of Education and Human Development. At BC for many years, we have been focusing on research and best practice in the aspect of schooling called student support. Student support addresses basically the out-of-school challenges and opportunities that impact children's learning in school and their thriving, their personal thriving. We have developed an intervention for schools called City Connects. It's now about 22 years old. It has a large research basis. And tonight, we're here to tell you a little about it and to answer any questions you might have. The next slide. Jen, do you want to take this portion?
Sure. Thank you, Mary. I appreciate it. So tonight, I'm going to just give you guys a really brief overview of what MyConnects is, how we use it, and why we use it before we just get into the reporting. Because it's always important to understand, you know, how and why we use things. So I'm going to go into talking about how MyConnects is a comprehensive data system. And really mainly, it's, we're used for recording plans for each and every student. So a big piece of MyConnects that is so amazing is that it's completely connected to our core practice. It's connected to what our coordinators are going to be doing on a day-to-day basis. It's used for tracking student plans, such as identifying what their strengths and needs are. It identifies the services and interventions that they're receiving. And then it's also a hub for all of the community resources that exist potentially outside of your school, but also all of the interventions and services that exist within your schools as well. In a way that we document and label them is through different levels of intensity. So you guys are probably very familiar with MTSS on a Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three. We talk about it a lot as enrichment, prevention, and intensive services. Meaning the same things, but how we label it is using those terms. We also label the different services through the different, we have four different domains that we talk about for students. We label them through academic behavior, social-emotional, behavioral, health, and family. We talk about different labels such as potential mentoring, tutoring, donations, financial support. And this makes it easy for coordinators to go into the system and look for services for families based on their needs or based on student needs and strengths. And really focusing on enriching students' experiences as well. We also use MyConnects as a way for coaching and supporting the coordinators. And this is that day-to-day practice of these creation of plans, making sure that they are high-quality, that they're done with fidelity. There'll be a program manager supporting their coaching on a weekly basis. It helps us drive our professional development for the coordinators to make sure that we are going very deep into the practice and making sure that they're doing it how it is intended and making sure that we are meeting the needs of each and every single one of the students in your district. So the way we do, the way that we go about doing this is by collecting information. And this can be from your student information system that is already existing, that has students' attendance data, has their grades. You may use behavior data. And really, we use that, the coordinator is going to use that information to really start to plan and develop the conversations that they're going to have with teachers to complete whole-class reviews, which I think Sue probably talked about with you guys in a previous meeting. So this is really just used to have comprehensive student support information in a place that lives for each individual student and tailored plans. The other amazing piece of this is that there is dynamic data available and reports that are embedded, which we're actually going to go into a little bit later. We're going to show you some snapshots of what those reports can look like. And really, we have different levels of reports. We have district levels, we have school levels, and we have classroom levels. And it even goes all the way down to the student. And these, and all of this is just connected right back to the practice. So we're really using that data to drive what we do in our practice, which is really important. And then lastly, this is just a quick snapshot before we really start to dig in. This is a example of a summary report that we share. And this is really used to inform principals, to inform teachers or other school support staff about what the students' needs are, what their strengths are. It really just gives you either a high-level picture or even zoomed-in picture of what's happening at each school. And really, what it does is it helps us start to evaluate our impact. Because like Mary was saying, we are a research-based arm out of Boston College. So this information, we want to make sure that we are providing effective, evidence-based interventions for students as well. And I think, I believe, I'm going to, if anyone has any questions about that, I'm going to pass it over to Brian.
Hello, thanks, Jennifer. And thank you all for the opportunity to give you just a quick glimpse of some of the core reports that make up our MyConnects system. We really want to just give you a sense for what types of reporting are available, not only to practitioners, but also to members of the school community. So we've chosen a couple of the core reports to give you some screenshots of using fake data, of course. First, at the student level, as Jennifer mentioned, you know, one of the core elements of City Connects is to give a thorough and comprehensive assessment of every student in order to develop a tailored plan for how to buttress the student's strengths and address any needs that they might have. Here you see a screenshot of a summary of a student's support plan. This is a, you know, per-student level-generated report that pulls from what we call the whole-class review, where there are strengths in four domains. And strengths and needs in these four domains are identified. Academic, social-emotional, behavioral, health, medical, family. These findings and some other descriptive elements, which are included in their review, but not in this report itself, contribute to the decision-making of the tier of the student. And then if you were to go on to the other pages of this report, you'd see any services that a student has been referred for, for various community or school partners, programs. And also, if a student has what we call individual student review or more intensive review with a support team, you'd see information about that too in the student-level summary. We have a number of reports that analyze specific aspects of the City Connects practice. One that we wanted to highlight here is the report that looks at the strengths and needs that come out of that whole-class review process. This report can be run at the classroom, school, or district, or grade level. Any, any of those angles to see all of the strengths and needs and what percentage of students are being identified as having them in this report. So you would see, you know, because this was a, this was quite a few domains. Right here, we're just looking at the academic strengths. But you would go in to see for each domain, all the listed identified strengths, and then that all the listed identified needs. So this really lets you look at a school or district level. What are the trends? What are the strengths and needs? And how are we, you know, really addressing those specifics, which were the purpose for frequently, and how are those being addressed? And then, we have a, what we call our summary report, which examines the City Connects practice at a very broad level. And this is the report that is most frequently used by our coordinators to help, to help report to other members in the school community every aspect of the City Connects practice, where it stands. So the next several screenshots you'll see are elements of a support summary report for a fictional school that, or district, rather. Again, these can be run at the school, district, classroom level. And we'll show this brief overview of service information. See how many students are being served, what percentage of them have had a complete whole-class review process, the number of services that have been delivered, and then numbers of how many students might be receiving just a handful of services, just to make sure that students aren't falling through the cracks and not receiving crucial services. Later on in this report, you would see the breakdown of both tiering and also re-tiering. We use a one, two A, two B, and three. Breakdown is our variation on the MTSS. And then you see re-tiering, which is a process that happens in spring where the coordinator and teacher meet again to confer and follow up on students' progress throughout the school year and how their kind of overall tiering situation has developed in response to the services they've received. And here we see the breakdown of services based on the intensity level. All services that students receive are categorized as either prevention, enrichment, early intervention, or intensive or crisis intervention. So you can see what, what intensity level a student's support needs and if, and to help understand if the intensity level of their services is matching the level of their needs. And it'll show the number, percentage, delivered in each intensity category. Next, this table shows the description of what we call the service label of these different services. And it will, in an actual summary report, you would see a much longer list of all the different service labels that are appearing in a school or district. And you'll just see what's the most frequently used service types. Final aspect of the summary report, you would see a list of all the community partners that a school or district has worked with. We've gone ahead and utilized some likely partners in the Beverly region to make this look a bit more visual, but normally you just see a list of those partners in this report. So with that, there's just a quick glimpse at some of the reporting. There's really an incredibly number of other reports and tools meant to help the support, support the City Connects practice. We just wanted to highlight a few of those to help illustrate what sorts of broader reporting capacities that our MyConnects system has. Any questions?
So I unmuted right now to see if there are any questions. So...
Hold for questions until...
Do we want to hold questions? Oh, I think you're all, are you guys all done with your presentation? Yep. So yes, so it's time for questions. So you can, yep. And I think if I mute and you unmute, then you can ask your question. Do you know what I mean? I think they'll be able to hear you. I'm sorry?
You're not logged in.
I'm not logged in.
Oh. Well, you can come over here and ask a question.
So as we sit here, we can't be seen and heard?
If you don't have a computer now, well...
But you can come over here and just ask a question here.
Everyone else, I know.
You guys can hear me, right?
We can hear you.
Yep, okay. So they're going to just come to here as, like, this will be the question spot.
Sure. Okay. Thank you for the presentation. I have a question about what, whether there's an interface that the parents would interact with? Or is that provided to, is that information provided to the parents through the school?
I can answer that. We don't have an interface with parents. And parents are entitled and can be provided with a student plan, for example. We usually talk that through with parents, the parents that would like to know that. Parents always are informed about what supports and services are recommended because obviously, if those services and supports are outside of the school, they would require parental permission, and some within the school would require that. So they know what services and supports are being recommended. But if a parent said to a teacher or a student support staff member of the school, "I would really like to know what kind of plan you have for my student, my child," of course, they would know. We would meet with them and go over that, the teacher or the student support coordinator in the school. But it's not, it's not accessible to parents technologically.
Okay. If I have a couple of questions, can I stay?
Yes.
The other question I have is, in terms of the summary report, I was wondering, can you, can you drill down deeper into the, the needs in terms of quantifying, you know, where they are, where they are in those needs? Do you, do you bring that information in? Or are they simply bins of, that are just counting the students in each of those bins?
When you say drill down, do you mean drill down for an individual student?
To look at like, let's say, for reading, for example, to look at a distribution of scores or some type of quantifiable assessment of their needs.
And we would combine this information with information from the teacher that's in the school, whatever data system the school is using. So if a parent said, "I want to know, when you say my child has quote, 'reading challenges,' what are they?" Then the teacher would have that information available for the parent. We don't report everything academically in this piece of the system because this is strictly about student support. But that data obviously exists and is of major concern.
Right. And so, so I would, I would also just jump in. We do have a tiered system for academics that will remain in place. That's a separate data system that we utilize, our, our system of data meetings and the utilization of, we use LinkIt, we use, you know, a number of other different platforms for that. So this isn't replacing that. This is supplementing with more on the support services, if that, if that's helpful.
I just have two more questions. Is that okay?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
So in terms of, in terms of costs, can you, can you talk about what, what it might look like for Beverly in terms of what the investment would be and how that investment would look over time? Whether there's a, an increase in cost over time, is there, is there a flat investment in cost? Could you describe that? How that typically works for a community like Salem, for example?
Yes. There's a cost that's stable for the first three years until the program is entrenched in the school. It takes three years for programs like this to become part of the way the school does its business. And then there's ongoing support. So there's cost for the technology, which is something on the order of 10,000 or less per year per school, or the technology system. And then schools can choose what kind of support they want. They typically want coaching. As you know, there's a fair amount of turnover in schools. And so, we want to be sure that schools are able to get it. And so we want to be sure that schools are able to get its support. We don't abandon it. But there is definitely a reduced cost.
Great.
Schools make a choice. Salem has made some choices of the school districts around what supports they want to continue.
Great, that's very helpful, thank you. One last question. I saw a panel of the community partners. How are they, do they have a dashboard where, those community partners, do they have a dashboard where there can be scheduling? Through that, through the dashboard that you showed, where that sort of facilitates the engagement of those community partners?
They don't have access to this system on their end. There were, you know, lots of concerns we had about building a secure system. And so we don't talk to a community partner about an individual student without parental permission, written parental permission.
Yeah, the question, I'm sorry, I didn't make it clear. The question is mainly like, just in terms of scheduling or just in terms of engagement. Not that they would see the student history or the student information, but as a way to facilitate engagement of the community partners. Is there like a scheduling mode that?
We work with them on an individual basis. For example, if we have a child who's got a younger brother and both of them need an after-school program, we pick up the phone or send an email to that community partner. The coordinator in the school gets to be like the central locus for the community agencies. They quickly get to know who that coordinator, the City Connect's coordinator is in the school. They pick up the phone, they say, do you have a place for two boys ages 10 and eight? And if you do, we have two kids whose parents would love them to go to that after-school program. So that's how we do it on a personal basis.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you very much.
I have a, hi, my name is Lorinda. And I have a question.
Yep, you can, you got it, I put it on, it won't echo now, and then when you're done, I'll unecho it.
We're switching microphones here, sorry. I wonder if you can give an example of when you talk about your district level reports? If there were a finding in one of the areas such as medical or even family that showed that we had a big trend in our community? What would then that intervention look like? And I'm looking across the table at, at our mayor, who doesn't have a microphone right now. He would have to switch seats if we want to talk about that. But if you have any kinds of examples like that and then, and, and then what the interventions were? When, when we're looking at something at the really big level as opposed to at a classroom level or an individual level?
That's an excellent, excellent question. And this is what we hope is one of the potential uses of this to the community large. For example, in Boston, we saw early on, which was the first place we used the system, we saw a real lack of mentors. You know, we keep a waiting list on this system. And we looked at the waiting list for mentors and it was getting longer and longer. And so we pulled together the groups that do mentoring in Boston, the community agencies, and we talked to them about this. And we talked to funders about this, saying, what can you do to support more mentors in the city? And what can the agency organizations do to get more mentors and match them up with students? So that's an example. If there was a health need, for example, asthma, in some communities, we see really high rates of asthma. We communicate that information, you know, obviously anonymously, never by student name. But we communicate the information to the health centers in that area and the health area providers. That we're seeing in the data, a high percentage of children with asthma. It's likely that the physicians in the community know that, but I think it's information that needs to be distributed. We'd love to work with the city or town and occasionally have done that. And are now working in the city of Indianapolis with a center that they have at the University of Indiana. That does exactly this, that looks at data like this and says to the mayor's office, here's where we're seeing the gaps in services. Here's where we're seeing a real need with a corresponding lack of sufficient services. So that's a possibility here. Now, we're at the early stages of breaking that ground, but we will share any information that's aggregate information with the right people.
Fantastic, thank you.
The mayor is going to join you.
Thank you. Hey there, City Connect's team, thanks so much. Mine is somewhat logistical and operational, and so Dr. Trochek may want to be part of the answer. We have, we'll be hiring several City Connect's coordinators at the different schools. What's the expectation for when they'll start? What will their upfront training look like? And then how do they begin to implement in a given building? How does, how will that all look for us? Thanks.
That's a great question, and I'll take it again, but my colleagues feel free to jump in. When you're a teacher like I am for a long time, you tend to love questions and always give the answers. But I'll start. The hiring is done by the district. We have what we call a hiring packet, which has job descriptions, which has the types of characteristics you want to look for in the folks that you're hiring. And the hiring is all done in the spring or summer prior to the start of the school year, obviously. In the latter part of August, we run a training institute at Boston College for the coordinators. Where they come and they're trained over several days in the practice. We're old hands at this, and we know you don't get it all on the first bounce. And so we literally walk them onto the ground with this. They get into schools, we do coaching. And there's a program manager in each district whom we work very, very closely with. And that program manager is an individual coach for each of those coordinators. You have to coach this practice. Otherwise, people are doing what they were doing last year somewhere else.
So can I jump in? I'm just going to jump in for just a quick second, because it's a kind of an opportune time for me. I know that you have noticed that Caitlin Beleza has joined us on the call. So I, one of the things that I'm sharing with you this evening is that we've worked with Caitlin. Caitlin has currently in a role where she's some of the time the EL director and had, was doing teaching responsibilities for the other part. We've worked with Caitlin and arranged, so Caitlin is actually going to be the new program manager for the City Connect's program. Actually Caitlin was who presented to you last week. We looked around and tried to make a really good decision about someone who had the right skill set. And Caitlin, we're, we're very, very lucky that she has agreed to take on the role as program manager. So she's joining us here tonight, and she will be in that one role of the, sort of from the central office point of view overseeing the individual City Connect's. So people in their school buildings, so.
Caitlin, that's being very well received.
It is being very well received, Caitlin, I just want you to know. We wish you could see everybody's smiling faces and, and thumbs up. And it was just lucky for us that we, two weeks ago, got to see the depth and breadth of Caitlin's expertise. And she really is, we are just so thrilled that she's going to be able to do this for us. So we're very excited about that.
So are we.
Yes. All right, is there anybody that has any other questions? Dr. Silva? Yep, yep, I can relay it.
So it's my understanding that with Salem, the way that they rolled City Connect's was they provided an opportunity for existing counselors in the school system. To take on those City Connect's positions. So that, to sort of balance the hiring overhead.
Yep.
I thought, and the explanation that I heard was that it was good to have some of those new members or some of the new City Connect people to know the students well. To make that sort of rollout work smoothly. So I ask you.
We have, we are, we are making that same offering out. But, and, and in addition, actually, we spoke at our last meeting when we had the administrative leadership team together. And I think it was Jen for that said that we might have an opportunity for a little forum for them too, if they had questions about the differences. So our next step is to post for the positions and then to work with, A, the staff that we currently have working in our buildings. To, to sort of ascertain what sort of interest we might have from them, as well as open it up. So we begin to get a pool of candidates that are interested in finding out and learning more. So we plan tomorrow morning to open, I think it's ready to click submit, I look at Mrs. Brown, because she'd be doing that. Anticipated openings for each one of the City Connect coordinators at the building levels and begin that process of having those conversations. But we, we are in ongoing discussions with the school adjustment counselors. It is a different role, we were, we've been made very, it's been made very clear through our meetings with the City Connect's folks. You know, sort of the, the skills and tasks that a City Connect's coordinator would have versus a more clinician person who's working. And so we just want to be, make, make sure that we're clear to our people so they know they have that opportunity to kind of express to us what, you know, what that would do. And then also at the same time, working to build a pool of candidates for that as well, so, yeah. Actually, I'm glad you mentioned it. So the folks, I would say just to the City Connect's folks, the folks over in Salem have been extremely helpful to all of us. I spent a good 45 minutes with Drs. Reich yesterday, last week, talking through it. And as even the business department, everyone at Salem has been very helpful. So we should give them a big thumb, a big thumbs up over in Salem, so we appreciate that. All right. Well, oh, Mrs. Robinson? Yep, you can do that.
So I asked this last month. Sorry about that. I asked this question last month, and I just wanted to get maybe a little bit more detail about this today. I just asked that in this day and age where teachers, we're losing so many teachers in terms of just the expectations. How could, I just maybe an example of how could City Connect's take something off of a teacher's plate or off of a social worker's plate? Or off of an administrator's plate? Just, I'd like to hear.
So I'll repeat the question just so that you can hear it. And any one of you folks at City Connect's, I know we've had this conversation in our last meeting as well. But the question was, you know, given the current amount of work that the teachers have on their plates? What are the advantages of City Connect's that may take some of the things that they're working with off of their plate right now? As well as how does it take some of the things off of some of our school adjustment counselors' plate? And so how, what is the balance there that City Connect's brings, I think is the question.
Jen and Margot can chime in. Sorry, I had to move rooms in my house, I just gave you a tour. I was running out of electricity, my battery. The, uh. Data we have, which is based on every single year, we anonymously and electronically survey the consumers. That is, the teachers, the student support staff in the school, the principals, and the community agency partners. And we ask them many, many questions around what's working for them and what's not. The data has been consistent for 20 years, that teachers are extremely enthusiastic about this because of the support they feel it gives them. I remember the very first teacher that I personally interviewed about it, when we started it, I said, I've got to talk to some teachers to get a handle on how they're experiencing it. And she had tears in her eyes. She said, I went home guilty every night because of the things I couldn't do to support my students. Because I was responsible for teaching and learning. And she said, now there's somebody in the building that I can reach out to and say, help me and take this off my hands. In those 20 years, schools, of course, have gotten many more resources, school adjustment counselors, school social workers, school counselors. It varies depending on the district. But you need someone who is building a system that addresses every single child in the building. Not only the children who are in extreme need. You need those too. But teachers feel very relieved. It takes a lot off their plate. It takes a lot off the principal's plate, very frankly, and we've gotten that. One principal said to me, I, I felt like I was in the weeds every day. And now I'm able to get up and see the bigger picture, because I'm not so drawn in to each individual. Not that she doesn't know, but she doesn't have to do the legwork to help solve problems. And what was the other part of the question? I know I'm missing something.
No, I think that was it.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you so much. All right. All right, well, thank you, I appreciate you guys joining us this evening, and thank you very much for all the information.
Thank you very much for having us, and we're very much looking forward to working with all of you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you. All right, and so now I am going to put my screen share back up and move on to the next thing. So the last item on, for the agenda for the superintendent's report is really sort of a budget update. And I did send along to all of you three documents. Those were really just to sort of support what I'm going to present this evening. Much of the information that I'm presenting is, is a repeat. We have not made any major changes to any of it, with one exception, which I'm going to point out to you as we go along. Again, budget is always based upon our district goals. We based all of our decisions as we went through the process on the priorities that were identified by you and the groups of stakeholders that we worked with. And we all know that we continue to have the same factors that are impacting the FY '23 budget. So those are just sort of where we are. Just as a reminder, we know we have our contractual obligations, our COLA, our steps, our lanes, and our healthcare. And our healthcare, we originally had had at 3%. We've been working with the city. Brian has some inkling that it may range anywhere up to 5%. Jean and I have worked really hard to take a look. We're confident that we feel like that amount, the money that we have set aside will, will, will cover it. We're also hopeful that it will stay at 3%. So we can just share that. But, but, you know, we're confident that we're, and Jean, you want to?
But if it doesn't, if it does go to the 5%, we do have other areas in the revolving accounts, like school choice, that we'd be able to fulfill that need.
If we needed to, awesome, all right. These are just the old slides, reminders of, I've gone through these a week after week. Again, no changes really to these slides, but I'm trying really hard. We talk often about the idea of the multiple funding sources that we have available that is so unique to this budget season. And I want to be clear, when we're utilizing district money versus when we're utilizing ESER funding or when we're utilizing other grants. So these are the positions that we're considering. These are continuation of this, of pre-K through eight positions that we had already established in FY '22. You can see that some of them have moved into the district budget and some are going to remain on the ESER grants for this coming year. These are new staff that was requested through the, this year. And yes, some of them were able to move into the district budget, largely sometimes through replacing previous positions or condensing or make, doing some of those efficiencies that we talked about. As well as having some positions on the ESER grant. At the high school, these are the continuation of the positions and where they're funded. And these are new staff requested at the high school level. We have a number of them that are in the district budget and a few of these that are over here. These were largely, the, the teacher positions were largely that revolve, the revolving school choice account that we, that we talked about. And then these are district positions that were a continuation from FY '22 that we may have established at one level. And then these are non-staff requests that are in the district budget. And then these are non-staff requests that are in the district budget that you, that were reflected. I went through all of these with you before. That's why I'm going quickly. So if I'm going too fast, please slow me down. But I know that this is the second time that you've been walked through these slides. So in particular, there was one change that we made on the budget requests, and I just wanted to point that out to you in, under the, what did you call it? Other, other, under other instruction, which is almost the second to last section at the bottom of the long orange sheet. We call this our orange sheet. We made a decision to move, instead of doing a transfer later, to move $100,000 out of the substitute and long-term substitute line and move that into technology. And we did that. One of the dangers that we're, we keep coming across is that a lot of the supplemental funding that is available to us, a lot of the additional resources, technology is an allowable expense. But one of the challenges is that we don't want to create a situation where we're not sustainable if we don't have those outside resources. So we, for example, and this particular line is targeting that, we know that every year we need to purchase approximately 350 iPads for the fifth grade as they enter the middle school. And they keep those iPads through four years, which means we retire iPads at the end of four years. And we do either a trade-in or something like that. But when we are looking over the course of the next three years, we need to build a sustainability plan that allows us to have those funds available in the appropriated budget. We all, we, we looked to taking the money out of the substitute line this year largely because we have also moved in, into having two building subs at the high school, which we think will defray some of the costs of some of those substitutes, as well as when we looked historically, we had over budgeted for those substitutes in the last two or three years. Jean is, as, as you, if you were at the finance and facilities meeting earlier, you'll know she looks at that line item weekly, daily, sometimes. So I, where I feel very confident that she said that we could move that money from there to that. You're going to see me over the next two years also ask to continue to increase that technology budget because right now we are probably still about 250,000 short in the technology line in order to build that sustainability plan that we, that we've created. And we believe that we can do that over the next couple of years on a, you know, by slowly moving in that direction. So that was the reason for that.
I wonder, do you, when you buy new technology, do you buy it new or do you buy it refurbished?
New.
Is there a reason why you don't, wouldn't consider refurbished?
I would need my technology person here to tell me, but largely, I think when we, particularly when we're purchasing them for the fifth grade, the iPads, we know they're going to keep those iPads for four years. We have, we have set the sustainability plan up so that we buy new iPads for kindergartners, for fifth graders, so that we know that we had, get a four to five-year life out of each one of those iPads. We, you know, we certainly don't buy them if we don't need them. But that, knowing that the life of those iPads need to be, you know, consistent throughout the four years, that's just, you know, what we've done. I will tell you that between E-Rate and between the ESER funding that we have, the ECF, not E-Rate, ECF. So there's been an, an ECF grant we applied for. We have our, the cost of our new iPads has remained down. That's largely because of the resourcing. So in terms of whether we would purchase refurbished, I'd have to have a conversation with the tech department. That's, I don't, it's out of my purview. I don't know what a refurbished one would be like.
I bring it up because I buy refurbished and.
And they work good.
They, they last me eight years at least. So it's just something to consider.
Yep.
Talk to the IT.
Yep.
I have a question about, Kim, are you good? About this slide, about the rubbish trucking and sustainability stipends?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a plan for a targeted plan for where or how those funds would be spent?
We have a plan to have a plan. Our plan is to have a plan, but no, we don't, we don't really have that yet. We, I mean, I think that there's a lot of conversation. We've worked with Christina Liel and, you know, in terms of some of the conversations around composting. We're talking with Bob around some of the ideas. But I would have to admit that we're putting some funding aside to make sure that we have funding available to make a plan, but we don't have a specific plan for that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Would you like to help make the plan?
If I'm not enrolled in a class at the time, the answer will be absolutely. But so potentially that could be that, that composting in a CAF in a school is reinstated.
Potentially could be, yes. I think, I will tell you that I've worked with Arena. You know, we, we've spent some time talking with Arena and discussing and, and she and I actually had the conversation about the need for a plan and what, what we would do in terms of some of that planning. And certainly I would be relying upon her in helping to create some of that work. So, you know, we, I think, just tried to survive the pandemic for a couple of years and we know that we had had, we had had some momentum moving in a really good direction that just got the brakes hit when, when everything changed. And so we're hoping and we're hopeful that as we come back, we start to look at that. But I have had a couple of meetings already with her in terms of what that looks like and, and what we might be able to do and what she might, how she might be able to help support us and, and that sort of thing. So that's the direction that we're hoping to go in.
Mayor Cahill?
Thank you, Madam President. I really, really hope we're going to be composting next year. I think, you know, we can look at a couple, couple schools, maybe as, as again leaders. I mean, Cove knows how to do it. They did it for a couple of years before the pandemic. A number of those, of the staff who are critical to that are still in place. We've got the students who, you know, are looking to do something at the high school. And my best understanding is the student leaders in that group are sophomores. So we've got something to work with, with them for the next couple of years. You know, we, we had a meeting before COVID. If you remember, we, we met with Endicott and the hospital.
Yep.
And the schools. And we looked and said, well, we're the three largest institutional servers of meals. What's going on already and, and, you know, where can we make gains? So I think, I think we're all excited about trying to get going again.
Yep.
And it doesn't have to be those two schools. I'm just saying there, there seems to be some potential there and maybe others as well.
I think when we were putting this together, we thought about putting some funding aside for the actual pickup, but also some funding for some people who are invested in doing this to be able to support some stipends for that. So that's why it is there. There's just, I, I don't have any specifics around it, but the idea being that we know that we need funding for both parts of it, for it to be successful. So I think that's where we.
So I will say that in addition to those children that you know about who, you know, we, a number of us got to hear them present, there's also interest from Adrian Baker. I don't know, is that still her last name? Rude.
Not her name, Manus.
For her, for her students to oversee that program. And so as you make your plan, if Beverly High is one of the sites, I think that having, having students man the sorting stations is incredibly important and, and that the, the fact that there's a teacher who has a group of students who wants to put those students to work doing that is just that much more of a natural fit. So I just want everybody to know that. She had reached out to me because I had been working with the other high school girls, blah, blah, blah. So just so that's out there as you go into your planning, the plan stage.
Planning the plan.
And Dr. Silva, did I see your hand?
Yes, thank you. Is this something that Green Beverly could facilitate or get involved in helping?
Yeah, I think, I mean, there are a number of, we can use partnerships from a lot of different people. I actually, that's where I was talking with Arena, kind of that starting point was. So she in particular was, who, who are the kids? How can I connect with some of the students in the faculty? How can I do some of that? So that, we do plan to do something. I don't want to say that we have a grand plan when we don't. So we're, we're working on it, but we are planning a plan. And yes, I think wherever we can find community partners, particularly around this area, I think it's always great to know that, to tap into the community and to tap into the people around us who have knowledge about these things, right? So I think that would be really helpful. I was excited that we composted pumpkin. So that was like getting us in the right direction. So, and so again, the, the final thing that I wanted to bring to you, and I, I am going to make this a little bit larger so people can see it. This is just, and I, I know that Ms. Viznik has a particular penchant for this particular graph, but it really is helpful, I think, for all of you to understand where are we right now with class sizes at each individual school and grade level. And so the, I, I want to make a statement right away. The kindergarten numbers are not accurate. Those are just, we just put place markers in. We have not separated out the kindergarten numbers at each building. But we did know, we made an adjustment at, in terms of a classroom, we need four sections of kindergarten at Centerville and only three at Hannah. We made that move. But these numbers are just estimates. The other grade levels are actually our actual proposed numbers at each building. And so you can see, first of all, over in the, in the far corner, you can see the size of each school. So that's kind of an interesting thing I always think to take a look at. There are 392 students at Ayers, 319 at Centerville, 418 at Cove, 344 at Hannah, and 359 at North Beverly. And that, you know, I think that's always interesting to look at. You know, we have programs at some of our schools. So Cove houses our AIM program, which makes the numbers to be, be up a little bit higher. And it's actually had a pretty big impact at North Beverly where the numbers have gone up by a bit because we've got AIM programs over at North Beverly now. So that's, that's where we are. And the Ayers does not have a program. They just have a lot of kids. So that's, you know, where we are at. We looked, we're looking at class sizes right now. Many of the class sizes are, we really aimed to kind of take a look in terms of our accelerating learning and our kind of response to coming back from the pandemic. We really concentrated on some of our younger grades. And then some of the schools at this point have backed out, whether it's a grade level teacher and put it in as an interventionist. So our class sizes are very reasonable, some, some really low. We always have an issue at Centerville because you can't have two, but when you have three, the numbers go up, you know, tremendously. So that, that's sort of just where we stand. But in general, you can see we're pretty consistent across all of the buildings. A couple of these, like I would point out for Hannah, normally that would only be three sections, but they're choosing to put in a fourth section. They're using ESER funding for that. That is not in the appropriated budget. That's the way they're utilizing. So principals, you know, we gave them the option of taking some ESER funding and making an impact. Where in your building do you need staffing to make an impact? And so they made that decision. And so that's, that's where the class sizes are. I'll take questions on elementary sizes or whatever. I mean, I don't know, well, how does it work best?
Sure. Ms. Viznik?
Are we going to try to vote tonight on the school choice numbers?
That, we voted at our last meeting and I intend to be on the agenda for our next meeting if we want to revisit it. I think we need to hear from Principal Taylor on that.
Okay. And we were going to do the lottery first, on May 1st.
Go ahead, Dr. Silva. And if I, if I could ask, you speak really loudly so Dr. Trocheck's microphone might get it for our participants remotely.
Could you tell me? Turn that on. Thank you. I'm wondering what the increase in class size is with these numbers relative to last year? For all the, just as a total.
Yeah, that's, yeah. So the question was, for those of you that are listening from home, I feel like I'm on a talk show, that the, the relative increase. So I would say that each school, it might vary, but our, our sizes are still in the same range. The, one place I can give you an example, at Ayers, if you look at the Ayers, they're up, it's right up here. Ayers, when it was in grade, when these 86 students were grade one students, they had five sections. So in first grade, their class sizes were probably down around 16 or 17. And they're in second grade, they will have only four sections. What Ayers chose to do is to, is to hire, and we talked about this at our last meeting, an interventionist who is able to kind of service and do some more services across the board for them in that, in that regard. And I think conversely, right now, Centerville's scheduled to have four and not an interventionist. So it's decisions that principals are making based on the needs of their students. So the class sizes have not varied significantly. They may be up two or three in some grade levels at some schools, but they haven't, there's not a huge variance. And in terms of our.
Go ahead, Mayor Cahill.
Do you want my outdoor voice?
Yes, please.
Okay, because it's not about this so much as that, okay?
Yeah.
I know you don't have a, an exact number on kindergarten, but we've talked about the early return showing that this kindergarten class may be smaller.
Yes.
Can you just give a little more context to where, what we know and where we are?
Are we at like 310 or 315 right now?
I think we're in the lower.
Okay. Yeah. So typically at this point in the year, we would be around 320 or 325. And we're just inking up to 300 right now. And so that's much lower. Again, you know, I don't know the reason why. I do know that I'm starting to notice we're falling back. At one point, we seemed to be at 360, 360, 360. But I, I'm starting to see now we have the 378 and then we have a 320 and, you know, so I'm not really sure what's impacting that. Our homeschool numbers, I did look and check our homeschool numbers are stable from last year to this year at around, I think, 105 folks that are homeschooling. That may have only been in the high 70s in previous years, but it's been at that right 100 mark for the last couple of years. I, you know, checked that as one possibility. So, okay, she's still working. I'll get back to you on that. Bethany's looking the numbers up right now.
I think in the meantime, Dr. Silva has another question.
Yes, please. Thank you. So just for clarification, with, with, with the class, with the size of the school not changing much, is, is the reason for the increase in, in hires, a combination of short-staffed as well as supplementing, utilizing the ESER funds to address some of the?
I think I can better explain it. The shift is that some of the buildings have taken, instead of having a, having five sections of a classroom and having that teacher there, they've shifted. They haven't, they don't have less people or more people. They've just moved that role to more of an intervention role. They're utilizing that ESER funding in a different way. Some schools are choosing to hire a special education teacher for that in, you know, utilizing ESER funding. Some have done a math interventionist. Some have done, and I think that two schools have done that. So, you know, the, there, it's just how they're utilizing staffing. And I think we're learning over time which intervention, which, what use of that resource is best serving that school. And it really does vary from school to school, how they might do that. And it's based, it's based on the individual, you know, unique needs of each building. So.
Thank you.
I can jump down just to the middle school, just to show you the trends. I don't have these, I mean, you know that we have our middle school in fifth and sixth grade, we have two-person teams. So students are assigned to two-person teams and that's done generally pretty equally across the class sizes are, we're going to, are anticipated to be between 23 and 24 for each classroom, for a classroom size. The seventh and eighth grade are at 342 and 365. Those are five-person teams. So sometimes those classes, based on content, are a little bit lower. They might have only 20 or 21 students in a section for that. And then at the high school, we have, so this 373, I know I mentioned to you earlier that that number was prior to finding out about Essex Tech acceptances. I know that we've had about 60 students accepted to the Tech. That may translate into 45 or 50 of them attending the Tech. So that number of 373 will go down and pretty much be consistent with the other sizes of our classes that they have been all along. So 323, 305, and 326 are our anticipated sizes in the other grades. So yeah, we are, we're approaching 300. We have about 290 right now kindergarten registrations. We will get more over the, you know, into the summer. Typically, we'll grow by about 15 or 20, but we will tend to have a pretty small kindergarten enrollment for this year. At least it's looking that way. I agree, this is kind of a really cool chart because it gives you, you can get a lot of information off of it as to, you know, what's going on and what we're doing. All right. And I don't. All right, and I don't think I have anything. So just where are we in the budget process? Well, I'm here tonight. Actually, I think what we're looking for, it's not necessarily a vote, but Jean now has to devote the next seven days, 24 hours a day, to creating our budget book, which is what we need to publish. We need to post that publicly by Monday, May 9th in order for us to do our budget hearing on May 11th. And so, and, you know, we just want, I'm just guessing and wondering if, if we're good to go forward with all of that. We would have our public hearing on the 11th. And then there's the city council budget meeting. And I didn't know the date, but I know that follows the vote that you all take. And I know Ms. Abel's going to talk a little bit about when that vote's going to take place too. So that's where we're at. Legislative process, just so you know, our chapter, the governor's budget that came in at 13158441, the House Ways and Means has been released. That's also at 13158441. We'll just wait on the Senate to come through. I'm not hearing any inkling that that's going to change in any way. So we're feeling pretty confident that that Chapter 70 number is going to be pretty stable. Which brings us to the proposed city contribution that we have, our ask sort of, so to speak, is the 1.4 million in addition to the Chapter 70 to have a final proposed budget of 69 million, 359, 898. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Trocheck. I don't know if you want to mute, but keep your speaker on for us?
I can do that.
Great, and. Maybe that won't work. Let's see. I don't think that will. Sorry. I will put my speaker up. Okay, Dr. McKenzie, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, I think it has to be the same computer, so the duplexing figures itself out. Well, thank you very much, Dr. Trocheck. Thank you. And the slides will be available for everyone after this so that we have an opportunity to look at it. For the chairs updates, obviously we have upcoming meetings. As Dr. Trocheck mentioned, we have our public hearing on May 11th at 6:00 PM. We also that night have our SISIL Curriculum Instruction Student Life planned for 6:30 and our regular school committee meeting for 7:30. Our other planned May meetings are on the 25th for Finance and Facility and Committee of the Whole. And as we've mentioned, that will be almost too late for us to hold a budget vote for that late. We would like to be able to pass it along to the mayor and the mayor to the city council for the planned budget meetings that the city council will be holding. So we do have a few options for our budget vote. There's nothing that precludes us from having it that same evening as the public hearing. So that would be on May 11th, having it on our agenda for the regular school committee meeting that starts at 7:30. It could be later in the agenda that evening. I did hear from at least one member who would not be available the next week on the 18th. But we obviously, with our remote meeting capabilities, could have a meeting on a different night. We could wait till the 12th. We could, you know, convene a second meeting if anyone had concerns. I think that Dr. Trocheck expressed how this is a unique year for us where there is additional funding sources. And we've had so many detailed conversations about how we're spending our appropriated money as well as our SER funding. I would feel comfortable, you know, having served on the school committee for a number of years and having seen the level of detail that Ms. Sherburne and Dr. Trocheck to, to propose that we put it on the agenda for the 11th and have the vote that evening. But it's our collective decision as to how we want to put this on our agenda. Ms. Viznik?
Do you want me to unmute over here?
You can unmute.
Oh, boy. You're saying that.
Yeah. Maybe put your speaker on?
Yes. We think we're ready? I, as often do, I, as I often do, do not disagree with what you said. I think some more information has to be presented first, including but not limited to, what's the percentage of that increase, right? So you just showed what we're going to ask for. Your last slide was what are we going to ask for, for a city appropriation? And so I'm going to just keep looking around the table. So you showed that number. I'm wondering what that percentage is. And then I'm wondering whether, how many conversations you've had with the mayor's office about that percentage number being quote unquote acceptable? Because in some years it hasn't been, right? So, and, and how that relates to the number that we brought forward from the financial forecasting? If you, I don't know who wants to answer which one of those. If you want to just roll down the table.
So I do believe that the number is 2.17 is the percentage over. You know, from last year, you know, in addition to we're getting much more in Chapter 70. But from the city contribution, it was 2.17 more. We've had many conversations with the mayor's office and stuff. And I feel that we're, this is what we're going to present. And then it kind of falls into the city council and the mayor's hands to tell us.
We, we, yeah, we've worked, talked this through many times. We're building a proposed budget to send to the council that has that number as a city contribution.
Ms. Viznik?
So I, I guess I, I am concerned in the sense that when we had our joint meeting and there was discussion about how much we expect the city revenues to come in, the increase of the city revenues, I'm concerned that there is a narrative being put forth by certain people that the schools always get an increase. And like, I don't know how to say it because I don't believe in this narrative. But the narrative is something to the effect of if we bring in 2% addition across our revenue sources, then that entire extra increase goes only to the schools. And so I think that trying to vote on the same night without some of that other context only perpetuates either that narrative or, yeah, there, there's just some tension there. I, I feel like there's tension there. I feel that for a number of reasons, including but not limited to my role of sitting on financial forecasting.
So you'd like us to consider a different, sorry. Are you asking us to consider a different evening?
Or. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Or I would like, at the, in between now and when we take our vote, if we vote on the 11th, for there to be more information from the city side, which is a burden on Bryant. I, I 1,000% acknowledge, wish to acknowledge that.
Mayor Cahill, do you want to speak? Or I can just speak to the, our role? Okay. Let me unmute myself. Ms. Viznik, you mute. I'll put my speaker back up. You know, I think the city charter is pretty clear. Our role is to think about the needs of all of our students and what our plan of action is. I appreciate the perception or the concerns and the narratives. I also appreciate all the work that you've done in financial forecasting and, and how many of those tough conversations we've been in. But we have a responsibility to present to the, to the mayor and then the mayor to the city council, what our needs are. And I think what Dr. Trocheck and Ms. Sherburne have put together, as well as all of our district leaders, is an assessment of what our needs are and, and that's what we're putting forward. Go ahead. Yep.
Yes, we're ready?
Yep, go ahead.
I couldn't.
I double clicked, okay.
I could not agree with you anymore. My concern is that at least one year in the past, when this body wanted to put forward a number, we were told ahead of time that that number would not be accepted further on down the line. So I guess what I'm looking for, I heard you say the city's putting together a budget with this number in it. Maybe I'm looking for some confidence in that more than just, yeah, that's, that's. Or maybe, maybe a statement of we're not going to end up in the same place we were however many years ago when we put forward a budget, which we thought was what we needed to provide the services for our students. And then that number wasn't accepted.
Swap real quick. I am thinking that we can have it on our agenda that evening. And if we hear from the public and we hear some consternation or some concerns about the plan that we've put together, we can always table it and we'll have to just pick another date. It just would have to be 48 hours from the time that we can get it posted. So we, we always have that option, just like we did with our school choice. Well, that was a little different. We actually voted it so that we had something on the record and then we'll, we'll revisit that at our next meeting. But just, we have to have a quorum. We do have the remote options. It's just a matter of making sure we, we have either a comfort level that the 11th is where the agenda items should be placed with a little asterisk, allowing us to have a vote that evening. And then we, we do as a body have the option to say, we're not ready to vote tonight. Is the 11th seeming like the right agenda location? Okay, I'm not sure, it's for scheduling. I don't think we really need a motion. I just need to have direction from everyone so that we are prepared on the 11th to vote if we need to. Mayor Cahill?
I would say I'm comfortable with us voting the 11th as long as everybody's comfortable taking that vote. So as you're suggesting, setting the agenda as if the vote will happen. Then, and then if it makes sense to do so, as we sit here that night, then great. And as you said, if ultimately there's a lack of comfort with taking the vote at, at that time, we, we find another date to do so.
Within 40, yeah, 48-hour posting window, so.
No sooner than 48.
Yeah, no sooner than 48 hours. Okay. So what, we'll plan for that. And we also alluded to the fact on the May 11th, we will have an item where we can revisit our school choice decision to see if we wanted to increase at any level by a number or two of students. So we'll have that on the agenda. And if there are any other agenda items that we need to entertain for our next regular school committee meeting, we'd appreciate those at the beginning of next week. We will be posting around Wednesday, Thursday for May 11th, if I get that right. I always, I always panic that we haven't posted on time. But please do let us know if there are any other regular school committee topics that we need to have on our agenda before we start to look towards the end of the year. Okay. I think that brings us to the end of this Committee of the Whole agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Second.
Ms. Quelo, thank you for the second. We do need to do a roll call. It's not debatable. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Dr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Quelo?
Yes.
Ms. Viznik?
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie?
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, yes. We are adjourned. Thank you, Bev Cam, 9:05 PM. And thank you, Ms. Curran, for sticking with us. I'll make sure I get a copy of the transcript and video if you need it and my notes. So thank you, everyone. Take care.